Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 2013 Meet the Candidates, School Board Candidates for the upcoming April 2nd election. My name is Chris Kreitch with the Camden Town area Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the Camden Town area Chamber of Commerce and the Lake West Chamber of Commerce, we thank you for coming out to hear more from our school board candidates and where they stand on various issues. School boards play an important role in the governance of the school district. And it's a very involved process, and so we are very excited to be able to be hosting this event. Because the majority of school boards in the United States are elected, it is up to the voters to select the most informed and competent individuals to fill these roles. During school board elections, candidates must demonstrate their knowledge of both the conditions that allow boards to be effective and the specific challenges that face their district. And that is why we are here this evening, is to learn more about the candidates for April 2nd election. Before I introduce our facilitator this evening, I want to thank the Camden Town School District. I want to thank Scott Martin and his staff for allowing us to have this venue this evening. We thank you for allowing us to be here. I also want to show our appreciation to our facilitator this evening, Sam Flory. Sam Flory will be our facilitator and has served as a senior community and alumni relations coordinator for Columbia College Lakeview Ozarks for the past three years. Flory has worked in higher education for more than 13 years, working in all facets of media, client, public, and alumni relations. He is a member of the Public Relations Society of America and the Council on Advancement and Support of Education. Flory is a 2000 graduate at the University of Nebraska at Carney with a degree in communications and a minor in administration. He is a member of the Camden Town area Chamber of Commerce and a proud alumni of the leadership Camden County. Please join me in welcoming your facilitator this evening, Sam Flory.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for being here tonight for this event. I want to thank Chris Kreitch for the introduction, the high introduction, and welcome to the Meet the Candidates forum. I'd like to echo Chris's sentiments of thanks to the Camden Town School District, the Camden Town Chamber, the Lake West Chamber for putting together this outstanding event. I think it's going to be a great exchange of ideas. Also, thank you each of you, our candidates, for their attendance and participation in this event. Before we get started, we have a few ground rules to cover which should take no less than an hour. Candidates, well, we give one minute for opening and closing comments. There will be five pertinent questions for each and every candidate, and candidates will have one minute to respond to the presented question. In addition, when you arrive, you have the opportunity to submit a written question of consideration. Those questions have been collected and subjected to a review. This portion of the program will depend on the availability of time and fairness to all candidates. We have a timekeeper located in the front row here. Once the questions are presented and response begin, you, the candidates, will have one minute to complete your response. The timekeeper will hold up a sign. Can you please hold up the sign for display? All right, there we go. We have 30 seconds, and then also a timeout. Candidates, please be aware of your time and keep a close eye on the timekeeper, please. This is not a pep rally or a campaign support event for particular candidates. We ask that everyone is respectful to all the candidates and their ideas. This forum is designed to give residents and the business community the opportunity to become more informed and be the candidates, to hear their position on various topics. With us this evening, we have the following candidates seeking to fill one of two seats on the Camden Town School Board. First off, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jim Bisancane, Mr. Darren Keim, Ms. Nancy Masterson, Mr. Bill Mulder, and Mr. Tom Williams. And a kind reminder to also silence your cellphones, just as a courtesy. And with that said, let's get started and hear from the candidates. Each candidate will have a one-minute introduction slash opening statement, and we'll start with Mr. Bisancane.
Okay, I talk fast like an auctioneer, so please bear with me. I'm Jim Bisancane. I have the nickname Mr. B. And how I acquired that nickname was, I taught here at Camden Town for 29 years. My first days in school here at Camden Town, the kids says, "Uh-oh, look at that name on there." And they just kept stuttering, and finally went on to come and says, "Can we just call you Mr. B?" I said, "That's great." And through the years, I had stuck. I am Mr. B. I'm producing the faculty, administration, and everyone else. I was known as Mr. B. I have three of my students, or three of my kids, went through school here and received an excellent education. I also have a daughter-in-law, and I also have a five-year-old granddaughter that will be a future lawyer.
All right, Mr. Keim.
My name is Darren Keim. I am a 1989 graduate of Louisiana High School, after which I joined the United States Army. I spent nine months in Operation Desert Storm with 1st Cavalry Division. My wife and I, Laura, have been married for 22 years. Our oldest son, Joe, Laker graduate, member of the Lakers' first robotics team that went to the world championship. He's an engineering student at the University of Missouri-Kansas City. My son and my daughter, also small, Molly and Sam, they're third and fourth graders. I was a Wannas leader at First Baptist Church in Camden Town. I currently serve as a team leader for the Buddy Pack Program at the Church of Osage Hills. We've been involved with robotics programs since its inception. I'm a board director for the Lake Area Commission Business Bureau, and I am the business representative for Camden County for the Lake Area Council of Local Governments. Would love the opportunity to serve you guys on your school board.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bisancane. Mr. Keim, we'll now move on to Ms. Masterson.
My name is Nancy Masterson. My name is Nancy Masterson. Currently, the school board president here at Camden Town for the last two years. I've been on the school board for 15 years. Before that, I started my career in education, really, with an undergraduate degree, a Bachelor of Science degree in elementary and special education from the University of Missouri-Columbia. Taught at Columbia for 40 years. Then moved to the Lake area to work in state parks, and that's what I've been doing since. Lived in the Lake area for 36 years now. My three children went to Camden Town schools and were very successful graduates of the program. I substituted in the district when they were young, and I thought later that I could be part of this school board, the skills that I had in my job would be very beneficial. I also served on the Missouri School Boards Association Regional Leadership Team, and through that organization, I received a lot of information that I put to good use, I think, on the current school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Masterson, and we'll move down to Mr. Mulder.
Good evening, folks. First off, thank you, the chamber, for putting this together, and thank you, folks, for coming out tonight. I'm Bill Mulder. I'm a lifelong resident of Camden County. I've been with law enforcement, with Camden County and Boone County. I'm starting my, recently started my 28th year in law enforcement. My wife, Jody, from San Charles, she's here now, and I'm here tonight. Thanks for showing up. I know you're busy. I have two children, Kristin, who is at Flutterville University in St. Louis, majoring in music therapy, Katie, who is still a junior here. The reason that I believe, that I think I can serve you the best is because I'm looking at this, not just for the students, I'm looking for the whole community, because this is a vital part for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mulder, and finally, we're back on with Mr. Williams.
Thank you. I'm Tom Williams. I have three kids currently in the district. I married a Laker, and I also graduated in 1989, so we feel like we're part of the family, a very proud Laker family. We moved back to Lake about 13 years ago after college and leaving. Went to work for Bank of America for a number of years and returned. I'm currently the Director of HR at the hospital. We employ about 1,200 folks and got close to a $70 million payroll that I get to help manage. So I think those are things that would serve well on the school board here. I've been 13 years at the Church of Osage Hills. I've been a youth minister there for 13 years. I've coached literally hundreds of kids in the community. So if you really probably wanted to know about me, you could probably ask any of those kids about Coach Tom, and they'll let you know who I am. I would be honored to serve on the Camden Town School Board. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Williams, very much, and we're going to start with our first question of the evening. And then we'll start with Mr. Keim with his first question, and we'll move to our left and rotate back around with Mr. Bisancane. But what motivates you to want to become a school board member or continue serving as a school board member? Do you have more to say?
What motivates me is, like I said, I've been involved with our child's education, try to be, you know, as involved as much as possible. As far as being a school board member, just the pride of the Laker community and the outstanding education that we have been able to provide our children have received. And like I said, I just think that our school board faces a lot of challenges over the next few years, and I believe that just a common sense business approach would serve the community well, you know, looking at everything from the ground level.
Thank you, Mr. Keim, and we'll move down to Ms. Masterson. Same question. What motivates you to want to become a school board member or continue serving as a school board member?
What motivated me in the beginning was that I thought I had skills from my job and my experience in education that would make me a good school board member. But what motivates me, this afternoon, I got to go to an assembly of third, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders who received the Internet Safety Award, National Award, and to hear them and to see their excited faces. When I go to school events, that's all the payment I need and all the motivation I need to keep working hard for the children in this district.
Very good. Mr. Mulder, do you need a question again, or?
I always have believed, and still believe, that schools are the center point of any community, no matter if it's a small school, less than 100 kids, up to the biggest high schools that there are. This is where everything happens. This is what puts the community together and glues it together as a whole. So I take the approach of, I want to work for the community. The school's output is a well-educated, well-rounded child. Because of the community, we can create that concept, we can push that concept forward. I think I have the skills, I know I have the desire, and I hope you'll allow me to do that for you.
Mr. Williams.
You know, life becomes kind of this evolutionary process, and I think over the years that I've worked so closely with kids and coaching youth, and then working at churches with youth at the, in Wann programs and youth ministry, and I've worked my way all the way up through high school. We survived the middle school years, which was great. Glad to be in the high school years now. Through that evolution, I've always tried to find places to serve. I love working with kids, always have. Three kids of mine own in the district, and so that my passion has been, where will I find a place in our community to serve with the kids? And I think the school board is, there's no better place to serve our community, and certainly to serve the kids, with a laser, literally a laser-type therapist, and what we're doing for their learning and encouraging their growth every day. So that's what drives me, my passion, to pursue a position on the school board.
And Ms. Bisancane.
You know, we need to teach a one-minute speech, it's tough. I ran for school, I taught sixth grade for 29 years here, and after I retired and made overnight, I missed the kids, I missed the community, I missed the activities, and I discussed it with my wife. And I says, "I think I want to volunteer and give some things back to our students and our community." And that's, I signed up to run for school board, and I was elected. With 29 years' experience, I know the students, I knew the community, I knew the curriculum, I knew the administration, all that. I thought, I'm pretty well qualified for this type of job. I still love to come to all the activities, and what motivates me is the kids here at Camden Town.
That was really good for women. All right, we'll move on to question number two, and we're going to start with Ms. Masterson. An individual school board member has no authority. Only the board as a whole can make decisions for the district. What skills or traits will allow you to contribute to effectively operate on the board?
I always have worked in an environment in state parks. We worked as a team to accomplish the goals of having the best facility available and offer the best programs available. So I work now as a team, and I like working as a team. I enjoy the interaction between individuals. I think when we brainstorm and we discuss things and we see each other's point of view, that's very healthy, and it may help me sharpen my point of view or help me decide, though I can see the value of that and go a different direction. So I think working as a team is very important, and I think I do that well.
Mr. Mulder, I'm going to read this question one more time, make sure that everybody's got it. What skills or traits will allow you to contribute effectively and operate on the board?
In law enforcement, you do work as a team. You work with your brothers and sisters, where the badge along with you, you put trust in them. And I can tell you tonight that there's nobody on this panel that will not serve you well. Each and every member of here, regardless of what you may have heard in the press or have heard on Facebook, all five of us up here are out for one thing, and has to make this community, this school community, work. I am to listen, I am willing to listen, and I appreciate people with different ideas. I can tell you that I don't have all the ideas, I don't have a cornerstone on it. I have been known to be wrong, and my wife will tell you on more than one occasion, I've been wrong. But I am willing to listen, and I'm willing to work with people to make this, get this goal accomplished of making the Camden Arts Free School District the very best it can be.
Thanks, sir. And now, Mr. Williams.
You know, I think one of the essential components of sitting on board is certainly having the ability to create an environment of trust and an environment of collaboration. And the role that I sit in the hospital now as the Director of HR, I spent a lot of years working very diligently at building trust, specifically because I have that position of having to manage between staff and management's opinions about how we should operate. And I spent a lot of time trying to establish trust with staff, try to establish trust with our managers as well. I think that's just essential, and I think when you're sitting on a board, being able to do that well is essential. We have to listen, we have to talk it well, and when we walk out of there, we need to know as a board that we walk it. We walk it as a team. And I think those are things I've learned in my career at the bank and at the hospital that I think would serve the board well.
Ms. Bisancane.
I'm a good listener, as far as that. I'm a team player. In the last three years, I've learned a lot. Instead of making just decisions in my sixth-grade class, it came to the point where I was making decisions and I'm making decisions for the whole district. We work well together, I'm one of seven. We come up with issues, we discuss those issues. We may not agree, but the bottom line is that we are all for the kids and want the best for our students here.
Mr. Keim.
Team, I've been part of a team pretty much my entire life, from playing football in high school to my service.
Turn my mic on. Anyway, being a team, like I said, I've been a team player all my life, you know, from playing football to serving with the units of the military in Operation Desert Storm, where, like Mr. Mulder said, sometimes you've got your buddy's life in your hands or his life's in your hands, and you have to respect and trust that that man has your best interest in heart. All the way up to now, where my job is bringing 130 or 40 kids together to, with many different attitudes, skill levels, and abilities, to be a cohesive team and have to count on each other. A team player listens to everybody, a team player respects people even when they don't agree with it, and sometimes you have to agree to disagree, but in the end, you have to support the decision, no matter what, and move on.
All right, thank you all. Great answer. And we're going to move on to question three now, and this will start with Mr. Mulder. On April 2nd, voters will be asked to approve a school bond issue for the Camden Town School District. That does not include a tax increase. What is your position on this ballot issue and why?
Schools that are going to be refurbished, rebuilt, redone, or set need, it's time. What the school board has done, and the district has put forward as a whole, this plan is a good plan to make things happen that need to happen. We need to have school buildings that our kids can go to school and feel safe in and feel comfortable and have a good, safe learning environment. Good job, guys, and 100% I support this issue.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah, I would mirror that response. I support the bond issue 100%. I had three kids that went through a CHPD elementary, so we got to live a large part of our formative years in OBE. And we've watched it age, and we've watched it get busier and more crowded than the best mules now, a classroom when it wasn't a classroom. And when you go there and see that, you understand that it's packed, and the district's growing, and that is awesome. That's a testament to how strong our school district's been, is that it continues to grow. That chart continues to move up, so I support it because there is a large need to do that, to provide equal access to all those students. To two new facilities, I think is an outstanding thing. I'm excited that it's going to add some security options on main campus as well. That's a hot, hot deal with the school industry, certainly in hospitals as well, that we take care of our students.
Ms. Bisancane.
Being on the board currently, I was one and I voted for putting the bond issue on to the ballot this time. I'm in favor of the ballot, the bond issue 100%, regardless of what you might have read out in our community. A few weeks ago, I went to Products and Trades here, like before she went, Darren and I had a booth out there along with Tom, and Nancy had one also. We had little cheat sheets like this that explained just exactly how the bond issue was going to do. We had these laying out, we explained it several times to people. When, last week, Osage Beach Elementary had an open house for the bond issue. They had two different ones. I went to the first one. I tried to answer as many questions as I could, and as the people came in and realized what, how small it really is out there, and where the classrooms are located, it was an eye-opening experience for a lot of people. We are growing, we need the room for these people.
All right, Mr. Keim.
I, along with everybody else, I'm sure, stand fully in support of this bond issue, mainly because, you know, we see Osage Beach Elementary getting new facilities, the Hurricane Deck getting approved facilities. This is going to relieve crowding and stress on the entire district. It's good for everybody. You know, we've got the safety issue coming up with the widening of the highway on North 5, and OBE is just busting at their seams, you know. It's time to do this. So like I said again, squarely in favor of it.
Ms. Masterson.
Well, I responded to some of the board members too that voted to put that issue on the ballot. I'll tell you that when I got on the school board 15 years ago, we were talking about the small buildings, the two outlying elementaries, and we needed to do something with the gymnasiums that were gymnasiums, cafeteria, and auditoriums for those schools. But the priorities came, this building, because at that time, we had growth at the secondary level. We went to full-day keg-urn, so we had to address that situation. But it is time now to address the situation in those outlying buildings. Besides doing that, we're also going to initiate safety measures at all of our buildings. And I was hesitating. Our buildings are as safe as they can be now. We do have measures in place, but we have some ideas that will make them even safer for our students and our teachers, and that's part of this bond issue, and to retire that $8 million of debt that we can get refinanced at a lower rate, which will benefit us also.
Thank you, Ms. Masterson, and thank you all for the responses. Okay, question number four. What is the best way to address differences of opinion on the board or between the board and staff at the school? Yes, sir.
I'm on it. You know, it really has got to start with, it's got to start with listening, and I think that anytime you have a team or a dispute and opinions are like one direction or the other, that starts with listening. We've got to bring it to the middle and listen to each other's opinions. You have to respect the opinion, understand the diversity on a board and diversity in groups is a, it's a great thing, but it has to be harnessed correctly. We have to listen, we have to respect each other's opinions and filter that into our thinking and come together on this thing. And when we come out of that deal, like I mentioned earlier, we got to talk it in those meetings, then you got to walk it. And as a board, you got to come back together and walk forward, knowing this is the way the vote went, and I'm behind this 100%. I'm going to walk it.
Ms. Bisancane.
You have to be good listeners on that. You're team players right now, and currently on board, we discuss things, we respect each other's opinion, whether we agree or disagree. The bottom line again is, what's best for our kids. We discuss, we may table some measures and things like that to get further research on it. We also ask questions, ask questions, ask questions, ask questions on things like this. We get everybody's opinion. We have a diversified board, and they come up with a lot of good ideas and things. Some things that maybe I didn't think of, and Ms. Masterson thought, oh, it's a good idea. So we go over and discuss these things as a team and then make our decisions as teams.
Mr. Keim.
That's going to have to start with respect for each other. You need to go in and believe that everybody really wants what's best for the kids at heart. You need to listen to everybody, like everybody else says, you know. But you have to, you have to be willing to come together as a team. Like I said, you know, it's, oh, you're, lost my train of thought. But basically, whatever you have to do to bang out and get a consensus, you get everybody together, you're not always going to agree. You may not always like the outcome, but like I said, once that decision is made, once that vote is taken, that's the vote. That's how it was taken. You move on to the next thing. You don't carve a grudge, you don't carry on, you move on to the next thing. Support the decision.
Ms. Masterson.
Could you repeat the question?
Question four. What is the best way to address differences of opinion on the board or between the board and the school staff?
I wanted to be sure I understood, because I think we've all addressed the idea of a board working together and having open communications and being able to discuss things, maybe not all having the same perspective and opinion, but being able to discuss it openly and respectful to each other. But I also wanted to address the issue of teachers, and that's very important to us also. And to that extent, one of the marching artists we get, one of the goals we set for the superintendent this year was to get out into those buildings so that teachers had a conduit to bring concerns to him that he could bring back to the board, and we thought that was very important, and we want to continue that. We also have this method of communication of our quarterly newsletter that we hope the community, as well as staff, parents, are reading and knowing what's going on in the school board and then can get back to us. So we just need those open minds and communications wherever possible.
And Mr. Mulder.
It starts with putting your ego beside you. Put it behind, listen to everybody's opinion. It's not about being a school board member, it's about being part of the team that's there to work for the community and to make sure you put out the very best possible product, which is, again, a well-rounded person. I have no desire for further political office, no desire to climb the ladder. I'm going to listen to what every board member has to say, I'm going to listen to what our administrators have to say, and I'm going to vote accordingly. Principle over politics is always the key ingredient. It doesn't have to be what I think is correct, it has to be what's right for the community. And when the vote's over, if it's not a 7-0 vote, and there's people who oppose me on the vote, that's fine too, and I'm going to respect them for standing up for their principles.
Thank you, Mr. Mulder. Moving on to question five. In your opinion, what are the strengths and the areas that need improvement in the Camden Town School District, and how would you, if elected, address those areas as a member of the school board? We'll start with Ms. Bisancane.
To improve our strengths, I think...
In your opinion, what are these strengths, and also what are the areas of improvement this Camden Town School Board District needs to address, and how would you, if elected, address those areas as a member of the school board?
We have multiple strengths here at our school. I mean, you look at the success of our students that have graduated in the past few years and throughout. I know Thomas graduated from here, and most of our people come back. As far as weaknesses, we just have to get together and start communicating better with the staff, with our community, and have more community involvement, and let them know what's going on, more transparency with our community and that. And I think with the communication, more, I just, communication, communication, communication.
Mr. Keim.
Strengths, 66, I would be enough for that, but I mean, you can go down the list, some great facilities, you've got a very strong community, you've got, the academics are incredible, you know, your after-school programs, your robotics, your band, I mean, there's just, you know, there's so much you can say that we can call strengths. Our college readiness program that we have, you know, our advanced education, high school stuff like that, we're turning out some top-shelf students going on to college. You know, I think that's our strengths. Our weaknesses, I think, maybe a disconnect with our community, you know. I think that we could be a little more open with how we do things, and I think we should, you know, make a more concerted effort to reach out to the community and say, "We want you guys in our school. We want you guys to come," you know, whether it's a monthly ham and eggs breakfast where a board member sits down and you say, "Hey, let's talk about it." But like I said, I just think we do better than that.
Ms. Masterson.
As has been stated, our academic programs are our pride and beat by very many communities and school districts in the state. We've been blessed in the past with wonderful local funding, and if you're not familiar with it, most of our budget comes from local funding. A weakness, is that same thing? It's when the economy flattened out and assessment didn't grow as in previous years, that hurt our... our district. And what hurt us even more was then the state didn't step forward and fund us better and thought they cut funding. And so if anything, maybe a weakness is that we don't let people know in communications how serious the funding situation was, and we need to be advocates to our state representatives. Tell them, today we heard from teachers who wanted their career ladder funding back, and we'd like them to have it back, but that's going to take away from the state legislature. And it's many voices, not just one.
Thank you, Ms. Masterson, and we'll go to Mr. Mulder.
The best example of the strengths I can give you is I, I have two kids in band. When we travel to those band competitions, and by the way, it's never been a band here that's real entertaining, you get up at four o'clock in the morning, get on the road, go somewhere. To go to these band competitions and see the Camden Cry Clay Marching Band sitting together, behaving, doing the right things, and to have other schools point about them and say, look there, that's what kids should act like. We have built that here. We have done it as a community. It speaks to our community, it doesn't speak just to the school, it speaks to the community pride and how we want these children to be. The weaknesses, Nancy nailed it exactly. We have the unity or funding needs in this community for this school that are going to get worse. Let's not sugarcoat it. Federal budgets have an impact on state budgets and have an impact on local school budgets. We're going to have to look very carefully as to how we deal with this. It's going to be tough, but we can do it.
And Ms. Williams?
You know, the, I used a little deal the other night when we talked with the teachers about foot on the gas. This is, when we talk about the school district, it's a great district, it's established a great name over a long history. Teachers here are amazing. A number of them are my teachers and then my kids' teachers. We've got great students. Keeps the foot on the gas. Bob Short told me once, he said, you know, I've never had a kid that I didn't raise the bar, and he didn't meet it. And when I raised it again, he didn't meet that bar. This district has been outstanding at raising the bar. That's what's developed a great district here. And I think we need to continue to do that. Keeps the foot on the gas, continue to drive the district forward, I think is a huge thing. What's restricting that, what are the challenges? Finances are huge. The government's looking for money, they're cutting out of school districts, they're cutting out of hospitals, that creates issues. I also think, to be quite frank, you know, we need to get, we need to get the board stabilized. We need that working cohesively together.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And we'll now move on to the questions that you all posted when you walked in the door here tonight. And you will each have two minutes to answer these questions. I'm sure Mr. Chris Honsley will appreciate that as a teacher. All right, first question from the crowd. As a school board member, how will you support our school besides attending school board meetings? And we're going to start with Mr. Cottin on this question.
Supporting our schools, I think you have to be a, you know, go out in your community and talk, talk about your schools and, and make sure everybody knows what's going on. I think you need to be active with your legislatures and to talk to those, talk to Rocky Miller, talk to Mrs. Franklin and say, hey, listen, you know, here's what we need. And as far as me supporting our schools, I'm, I like packing backpack buddy deals. I like coaching football. I like traveling and watching the robotics be, be successful, and they are very successful. So I think that, you know, I think it's important for a board member to be not just sitting up here and on the table. I think you need to be the person that's going to go out there and interact with their body and just be, you know, be a real person, be approachable, and, you know, just do whatever you can do, provide support.
Ms. Masterson?
I think what I'll do to, to support the school is, is continue to learn. We have a school model, everyone learning every day. And I find that my time on the MSBA Board, the Missouri School Boards Association, and my time just locally here in the school board, we have opportunities to go to legislative forums and to statewide meetings held here in the Laker. And we learn so many things, or we have the opportunity to learn so many things. So I'm going to continue to be a learner of things, educational issues, ways we can improve, and then bring those ideas back to our board. Some of those ideas we adopted and others didn't feel was quite the right fit for our community. I'm, I'm a pretty accessible person, I think. You'll see, we have a lot of the events and really, people can approach me if they have an issue they'd like to, to address the board or have me look into for them, I'd be glad to do that. And so I'll continue to do that and use those fifteen years of experience that I have, knowing where we've been, to see where we want to go in the future.
Thank you, ma'am, and we'll move on to Mr. Mulder.
Well, that's a good question because that's exactly right. Just attending a board meeting is not being supporter of the school, that's just fulfilling your duty. To be a good facilitator and on a board, you have to be out in the community and listening. You have to have open ears and open mind, be willing to take your hits and your punches. There's been a few times in the past couple of months that people have already thought I was on the board and, boy, did I get an earful. Well, you know what? That's fine. That's, that's what you do if you're an elected individual. If you're an elected official filling an office, you listen to what the people have to say because they put you there to do exactly that. You go to basketball games, you go to football games, you go to choir concerts and everything, and you let people have access to you and you make yourself available because you are the sounding board for you to take back their concerns to the school administration and say, what about this? Is this a problem? Can you look into this? And then you get back to them with the answers because that is your responsibility. And that's what a school board member owes to their community.
And Mr. Williams?
I think it's essential to do a few things. I think we need to listen. Number one, I think we then need to support, and I think we need to be an advocate. So, we need to listen intently to the community. This morning, we sat through some public session with the school board and we listened to the teachers. How much did you sit on that? Is the listening intently just to understand what it is that our community and the folks that we serve, our teachers and our students and administrative staff, what is it that they want us to know? That needs to be a part of our process, listening intently is important. Support's big. When we get out in the community, a school board member should be your biggest cheerleader you have. There ought to be pom poms glued to the front of your car. Support the district. Bring that Laker pride out. It's a great district, and I think that should just ooze out of our pores as a board member. Advocate, I really think that a board member brings a lot of value at a state level and legislative level. When we talk about finances, we talk about legislation, we talk about those things, that's their job. They need to get out and know what the issues are, know where your school district wants to be with that, where the community wants to be, and advocate for that at that level. I think that's a huge point what a board member should be doing.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, and we'll wrap it up with Mr. Chris Honsley.
I think being very active as a board member, not just attending the meetings or making some of the decisions and all that. I try to be very active. Being retired now, I've got a little bit more time. You will see me either up in the high school or in administration building, talking. I think you, the biggest thing is to encourage our staff right at the moment. And like I said, be a good listener. One of them at Walmart, someone from, hey, Mr. B, I need to talk to you about this. They go to the Jack's Ward, he goes, hey, can I talk to you about this? And that. And, you know, be a good listener, be concerned, you know, encourage, brag about our school. We have a good school. And go out and promote different things, invite people to come to the different activities that we have. When I go to, I think I've been basketball games, football games and all that, I says, what are you doing up here? I says, I've done it for twenty-nine years, good habits are hard to break. In fact, on our way down tonight, we're having the real soccer game, and somebody will ask how come I wasn't here? But be active in our school. Promote our school. Be an active person, encourage. And we try to encourage the staff. You know, the two most powerful words to a teacher or an agent is thank you. And listen to our community. We are concerned, we're humans, we may not agree, but if we communicate and you listen and you hear both sides, ninety-nine percent of the time, we're satisfied and everything is great.
Thank you all. Okay, we'll move to question two from the crowd. What three things we can do to promote Camden School to the community and to the state? Again, what two, or what three things we can do to promote Camden School to the community and to the state? And we'll start with Ms. Masterson on this question.
Well, I, I think I'll continue what I've done for fifteen years. When I go to statewide meetings or even out in this community, maybe not a group that's technically can, like a parent group, but I'll brag about our school because we do do wonderful things. And I think oftentimes, not everyone in our community knows the width and breadth of the programs that we offer here. You know, people will say, well, I don't know about that international baccalaureate program. So that's one opportunity to educate them and tell them what it is and how it benefits our students. So both to community groups, not necessarily parents group, but any group that I can, I'm going to celebrate and inform them of what wonderful things we have to offer here. And when I go to statewide meetings, you know, I can do that same thing. And, and that exchange between different school districts is a wonderful thing too. We recently put students on our school board as advisors, and that was an idea that we stole from another district that was very successful in using that. So I'll continue to communicate, I'll continue to go to things. Like, it was a honor really to be up there in front of the crowd and then be introduced as the school board, a school board member to the young students at the elementary level. That, that was a, that was a pretty wonderful thing. We, we have lots of opportunities to go to the beginning of school breakfast, the end of school breakfast for teachers, I'll go to those kinds of things. And then the last thing is, you know, I'll continue to be an advocate for the legislative things that need to happen in the state, whether it be funding for preschool education, our reinstatement of the funding they should be giving us for transportation, that's shrunk from seventy to forty percent reimbursement. I'll continue to advocate for things in the legislature that needs to happen, like career ladder for our teachers and our students.
Thank you, Ms. Masterson, and we'll move on to Mr. Mulder. Now again, what three things we can do to promote Camden Schools to the community and the state?
You know, it's so easy to promote this school district. The work has already been set forth and done, and the kids are the biggest thing to promote this school. When the, the kids go out there and they behave in the way they do, whether it be the robotics team, the football team, the cheerleaders, whoever, it's so easy to go out and say, yes, that is our school district. The things that I would like to see happen, number one, is I would like to see board meetings and school activities placed on our local cable, cable communications channel. So the folks that come down here in the summertime from all the surrounding states and the communities throughout the state of Missouri, if they tune in for two seconds, maybe even on that motel TV, they see what Camden's doing, they see what we've got going, they want it themselves. The second thing, I've already done this, anytime I travel somewhere, the stool, the school conversation will come up. So what's it like at Lake of the Ozarks? Are you guys just a little bitty hillbilly town? Well, let me show you the picture on my cell phone. Take a look at our little bitty hillbilly high school here at Camden. The third thing is work diligently to say whatever I can, not just about this school, but about the whole community because it's a package deal, folks. We're Lake of the Ozarks, we're a proud community, and we need to keep working to that and speak to it as a whole.
And Mr. Williams?
I, in my role at the hospital, we do quite a bit of recruiting, a lot of recruiting. I spend a lot of time talking with folks that are out of the area. And one of the proudest things that I had the opportunity to talk about is the high school. And most folks have heard about Camden High School, it's a big reason why folks move to the area. And so we spend a lot of time talking very specifically about the high school. I'm proud to say that I'm able to do that almost every day in the job that I do. One thing that I, I really think is important, that a board member should function as a role model in the community. And when we're involved, we should be involved in the community. You should find things to be involved in, we should be doing school events, and again, remember your role model. And I guess that's just my upbringing in, in, in working with a lot of youth ministry with kids, because it seems like they watch everything that you do and they love to tell you about those stupid things you do as well. But I think it's a big deal when you're role modeling as a school board member. You're, you're sending a very loud voice about the school district as a school board member. So I think in the community, how well you represent yourself is a big representation of how we represent the school. And it's important to remember that when we're at events. When we go to events out of the area and we're cheering for the Lakers, we represent Laker Nation. That's what you're doing. And I think that's a huge thing to remember, we're role models, we've got a great opportunity to talk to other school districts when we're out traveling out of these games. I also think if we're involved at legislative levels, which I think is extremely important for board members, I do a lot of that in the role that I am in in the hospital, for the hospital as well, that's a big opportunity again to represent the school district well and to make sure the state hears about the great things that we've been doing day in and day out.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Chris Honsley.
As far as promoting our school, I think our students and our staff do that very well. As far as only go to activities and things like that, that's really, as far as the community is concerned, I think we need to be transparent and be active in there and try to get the community more involved. Hey, look, we're doing this, look what our students are doing, look what our robotics team, what they're doing, they're going to the state, can you help us here? And things like that. As far as the state, we need to watch the laws and the legislators, what they're proposing as far as things that deal with our school. We had the opportunity, Nancy and I and board members went up to our MSBA legislative forum not too long ago, and we've got proposals from the representatives and senators on some of the bills that directly affect our education. Some of those things were great ideas, others of them we thought, they weren't so great for us. But we do have a good school system. When the kids go out, like I said, like the band and all that, people notice that our kids are very well behaved, very well mannered, and they start asking questions. And as a board member, if you're there, you can answer these questions and kind of brag on them.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Cottin?
Our school's pretty easy to, to talk about and promote. I mean, it's, our high school campus is a tourist attraction. Every time somebody comes to town, they're like, man, we've got to see your school. So everybody comes down to the house or whatever, you know, we, we bring them to the school because we're proud of it, we're proud of this community, we're proud of our teachers, we're proud of our students. I mean, like I said, it's just really easy. You know, you want to strike up a conversation with another community that's a hundred miles from here, walk through some town with your Laker football hat on, you know, they're, they're, hey, we W guys, perfect bad news. And, but I mean, and then, you know, scholastically, you know, we've got, we're sending a ton of kids to the best colleges in the nation, you know, they are sharp, sharp kids. Your robotics programs, you know, you're, you're going to the world championships. Again, you're a very new team, you know. Like I said, Camden's just a real easy school to promote because there's an awful lot there to offer. So, you know, like I said, you know, your teachers, teachers are incredible, but I see a lot of people at the water park over the course of the summertime, they don't get to talk a lot about our community, about our school and stuff like that. And then it's a perception that we are just a little bitty school. I say, well, go up to the, to the light there, hang a left and drive down through there and take a look at what, what we got, because it's pretty incredible.
Thank you all. And moving on to the next question, we're going to start with Mr. Mulder here. And after exclusive, sorry, after extensive publicity about the division on the board, what is being done or will be done to facilitate cohesion and diminish the division?
Sometimes that, that board division thing has been much overplayed. Folks have a right to say what they think, to vote the way they want to, and they have a right and expectation to be respected for that. That is what it boils down to. Why we sometimes get so involved and let these things grow their own leg is beyond me. My idea is to, the first day on the board is to shake everybody's hand and say, you have my undying gratitude for your prior service, you have my undying, undying respect for what you do, and you have my loyalty to each and every one of you, to work with you and to make this board cohesive and to do the right things. There will be no ego on my part. Again, folks, I'm not running for further office. This is it. This, I just want to serve you and be done with this. I would like you to take with you tonight that I don't think that the board division is as deep as you think it is. There are good people on that board, and it's unfortunate that things grew the way they did. And I hope we can get beyond this, no matter what happens.
Ms. Williams?
You know, I think that, and I've sat through several of the last kind of board meetings, the public portion of those, and listened to the board members speak, and that, that singular focus on student learning, on student education is, is really was tantamount here. If the board could come together on that and they really all speak that well to pull that together, I think that is important that whoever out of the five here that, that get elected this upcoming Tuesday, they go in with that focus, that there is an opportunity here to make sure that, that we go in with an open mind, with a heart to listen, a heart to understand, and a heart to pull that together. I think that's, that's essential. And so I hope that, again, whichever of the two of the five here that, that land there, that's the mission, that's the goal, that's just got to happen. that's the mission, that's the goal, that's just gotta happen, it's mission critical. And that's what I would definitely like to see happen.
Thank you, sir. And we'll move on to Mr. Vissonson.
No, my, Mr. Mulgrew, I think it's going out of proportion, way too much. We do have differences, we have our opinions and all that, we respect our, our opinions and when we vote and things like that, bottom line is, is for the kids. We had a board meeting this morning, it went very well, I thought, and I spoke to other board members, and it, it's gonna be a healing process for us. We have to respect each other. Listen, Astrason has her views, I have mine, I respect hers, hopefully she respects my views also. But we're not out of each other's throat. We're here, we were elected by the community to help our children and our, and our school. And that's our goal, that's what we really wanna do.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Conner?
Healing this, we've all, five of us have collectively talked about this. This has to move forward. Our, our teachers and administrators and stuff, they're, they can operate at the incredibly high level that we expect them to with unrest at the top. So I think the first thing that has to happen is, you know, everybody has to sit down in a room somewhere and have an area now, figure it out, figure out what's going on, you know? Is there really rifts or, or was it blown out of proportion or, or what's going on? I mean, I really think you gotta get back to square one and start over with here. And I will echo Tom, Bill and everybody, I think you got five people here that, that are willing to work towards this, you know? I pray over this daily, you know? I hope to get the opportunity to do this, but I also ask the Lord to have his hand on this, and if I'm not the person, then please put the right person in this, you know? This community and this district really, really needs to get this lined out and, and come together. But like I said, I, I think you, you're gonna have to go back and just regain the mutual respect and trust for each other that a board needs to have and, 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 you know, just, get back to square one, I guess. I'm a pretty common person, so like I said, I'm laying these terms, but like I said, you're gonna need to, you need to pull it together and show some Laker pride.
And Mr. Masterson?
You know, the first meeting in April will be after the, the board election, after the election, not April 2nd. And we do a thing called reorganization of board, and that's a great time for us. And then last year, as two board members were sworn in, or in one case re-sworn in and a new member, they recited oath. And I decided as board president, I was gonna give each of our members that same oath to look at and think about it, because it is a chance every year to start over. So hopefully that's what we'll do, again, mutual respect for each other, learning to listen and being respectful, trusting each other. These are all things that we need to put into place right at the beginning, and that will be the way we'll order our board and, and hopefully make wonderful decisions for kids in our community and, and people in the community will be proud of their school board, man.
Thank you, Ms. Masterson, and thank you all for your responses to that question. Uh, this one's a little bit tricky, so we'll read this couple, one a couple times, and we'll start with Mr. Williams. What makes you the best person for the board? What could you do to lower expenses? Osage's levy is only two dollars and seventy-two cents. Again, I'll read it again. What makes you the best person for the board? What could you do to lower expenses? Osage's levy is only two dollars and seventy-two cents.
Well, I think it's the hair what really is probably what would make me the most politically challenged board member, if I get the opportunity. You know, the fiscal part of this is, is a big deal, and I've been in, I kinda cut my teeth in banking as I came out of college. I've been at the hospital now for thirteen years. Like I said, we've got almost a seventy million dollar payroll budget, and as a HR guy, I have a little bit of accountability for that. I'm used to looking at fairly large budgets and analyzing what is going on with those budgets. So as, as far as understanding a budgeting process, understanding those finances, I think I do bring some of that to the table at, at a large scale like our school district here. So I think that, that would be very valuable in that process. You know, where you find those costs, those costs to cut, I will tell you where you don't find them. I would not at all be an advocate of cutting programs here. It would be very disheartening for me to see any child here lose an opportunity because we had to cut a program because we were trying to find an expense cut. That's a concern of mine, I don't wanna see that happen. I think we need to be more creative, find ways to find that money. We may all need to sit down and pray the economy coming around and the assessed evaluation goes up and that tax base goes up. But what I know is we need to be very fiscally smart with that. I hope that's some of the experience that I bring to it, as far as that. Did I miss the last part of that question?
Uh, Osage's levy is only two dollars and seventy-two cents. I haven't found that.
That's accurate.
Absolutely, I agree. And what makes you the best person for the board? What could you do, what could you do to lower expenses? Osage's levy is only two dollars and seventy-two cents.
Well, I've worked it for twenty-nine years, so I, I've gotta jump on a lot of that. I mean, like I said, I need to, most of the staff, I know the curriculum, I know most of the community members, and they know how I stand. As far as finances are concerned, I think we have to be financially responsible. One of those things, when you take the heads of each of our departments, you take the teachers, you take Dr. Hatfield who's in charge of our budget, you get together and you start getting their input. Is there any non-essential items that we can cut from our budget that doesn't directly affect our students? And when you get all these people together, they can find out different ways without affecting our, our kids and their, and their learning. As far as Osage, we're not Osage, we're the Camden Lakers.
Mr. Conner, would you like to question again, or you said?
Just the last part of it.
Sure. Uh, what would you do to lower expenses? And Osage's levy is only two dollars and seventy-two cents.
Assuming the levy was, what would I do if the levy was two dollars and seventy-two cents?
Was the statement on the, on the, you know?
Right, right. Yes, 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 yes. Best person for the job, well, I got more hair than Tom. No, probably more than Bill, but definitely more than Jim. But anyway, no, best person for the job, I, you know, I, I think my ability and my willingness to, to reach across, and I, I, it kills me to use this term, because this is awful, but reaching across and trying to bring everybody back together and to humble myself to listen to everybody and just say, you know, what do we gotta do to do this here, guys? You know, what, how do we really get back and just really be willing to lay it out there, just do whatever it takes to, to get this thing put back together? Like I said, to, you know, the, the teachers and again, the teachers, administrators, they're just, with turmoil of the top, you know, you can't do that, so I, I think I would do that well. As far as expenses, I said, I think you have to go back and look in years past at services you provided and what it cost and how you can efficiently do that without jeopardizing the quality of education or the experience for the children. I think you need to, you know, like Jim said, I think you need to get everybody together, fill this room up with everybody that works here, and give everybody a piece of paper and say, hey, what have you seen the last year that could've been done a little more efficiently? So, you know, just, to, to, just, just keep going and, like I said, you gotta listen to everybody, because the people that are doing the work are the ones that are gonna know where, where you save money at.
Okay. Ms. Masterson?
Okay, I'll end this by saying, I'm just old. And I think that works to your all's advantage. I've been on the school board for fifteen years, so I've seen this district grow and change, and I know where we've been, and I think that's invaluable. I thought about this the other day, I, I think of all the administrators, I've really been around longer than most of our administrators. There's a few teachers and, and a few people like, like Roma, there, she fit a few more years in this district than me. But I've seen this district through a lot of times, through very rich times because of, of when we had good reassessment years. And now I've seen it where we have, and I'll address the next question, we have, we have drastically cut expenses in this district. We, we did an energy audit, and we initiated energy savings programs, and that saved this district some money. We've delayed purchases like school buses, well, you do that at a cost because you have other expenses to keep that aging fleet in place. So we've done many things. We've had funding cuts leveled against us at the state level. Again, as I said earlier, we used to get about seventy percent of our transportation costs refunded to us, now it's more in the forty percent area of, of what we get refunded back. And, and that hurts, and it's hard to make up that kind of money. Flat interest rates, when I first joined the board, are, just the money that we had at the beginning of the year till the end made better interest for us. And that was money we could put back into the district. And, and these years of re, re, flat reassessment have really hurt us. It's wonderful that School of the Osage can offer the levy they have, they've had the same kind of rising expenses we've had, but we're a larger district, and we prided ourselves in the discussion this morning, we gave teachers career ladder, and School of the Osage decided not to do that. That was a program to reward veteran teachers.
Thank you, ma'am. And now we'll move on to Mr. Mulgrew.
You know, the first part of that question, I'm not gonna tell you that I, I'm the best on anything, I'm just a humble person, asking for your vote, and that's all I am. So I'm not gonna tell you I'm the best person for the job, I think there's five passionate people up here this evening looking at you and saying, this is what we offer and this is what we can do. Let's speak to the bu, the money, because I think that's the real part of this question. You look at everything with an unjawed eye. What can we do to, to move this money from one place to the other without impacting negatively the district as a whole and the province it puts out? How can you do that? Well, you know what, there may be ways, and some things there may not be a way to do that. You may have to continue right on funding certain things at a low. Two dollars and seventy-two cents, well, gee, I think everybody enjoyed having that. But School of the Osage is not Camden, Ms. Vissonson, they said they are smaller, they have lower levy. And here's what I would suggest, if we think we can do it, we'll start getting community members in here and have them do a big discussion on this, and we'll throw it in their lap and show us how to cut down to two dollars and seventy-two cents and retain that level. And if you can do it, then I think the board should give it serious consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mulgrew. And our final question of the evening, that's one that comes from the crowd, do you feel that it is more important to hire someone that is qualified for a position based on that person's skills and knowledge? Or do you think it is more important that the person graduated from Camden R3? No matter how that person has performed in their previous job? And I would start with Mr. Vissonson on that.
I think graduating from Camden and skills and knowledge go hand in hand, because we do provide an excellent education. When our students graduate here, they do have the skills and the knowledge that it takes. They are successful when they go on to college and that, so I think it's a hand in hand. But we try to pick the best person for the job and look at what the needs of our students, our classes and our staff, will this person fit to that particular area?
And we'll move on to Mr. Conner.
I think you should always hire the best person for the job. You know, if you've got somebody that's more qualified and, and has a better job performance job history, absolutely, you should always hire that person. That being said, if all things are equal, you know, I mean, flat equal, you should probably try to hire that Camden person. Like I said, I, I don't, like I said, and I've been a big advocate of trying to create and try to give Camden graduates and, and make them, you know, get them back to Camden. But if you're gonna suffer with the quality of education, absolutely hire the most qualified person every time.
All right, Ms. Masterson?
I'm gonna go to the last part of that question, because you, you said something like, no matter how they performed at their last job. Well, that really is what you should be looking at, you know, what has been their performance? What are their strengths and their weaknesses? So that last job was important for you to look at, see if they were leaders of change, if they led staff well, if, if their, if their students performed well, whatever facet they, they worked in that district. But you should look at that last job and then hire the best candidate. I, I think, you know, we're, we're all maybe cocky enough to say, well, you know, Camden graduates are gonna rise, the cream is gonna rise to the top. And, and we have students that lead this district very well prepared and so proud that so many of them go into education, have come back to us to teach, but they've been the cream of the crop. And, and I think Camden does look at and hires the best teachers, and oftentimes they are Camden graduates, and that's wonderful.
Mr. Mulgrew?
You always hire the best, get the best for your money. It's about who is going to serve us best in this community, if nothing else. If it happens to be somebody that was a Laker and attended school here, that is wonderful, then we've really got something going on. But you always, in my mind, hire the best person, best qualified person for the job.
And my next choice?
Yeah, I guess I kinda agree with the group. I mean, the key here is, and we do a lot of that here at the hospital as well, is that, you know, you're looking at somebody's history, their background, their resume, and it's essential that that's, that's been stellar. We're putting educators, if we're hiring teachers, if we're hiring our students, at the hospital, we're putting healthcare providers in front of patients. That's what we do for a living, and having the best of the best do that job is how we elevate what we do. I'll also tell you that one of the key ingredients for me, when I'm looking at, and I hate to be this pragmatic or this business minded, but when I look at return on investment in terms of who we're investing our money in, it's not a bad thing to say, we've got a Camden to graduate. I will bet dollars to donuts, they, they've got a very vested interest in this school. And may have a bigger vested interest in this school than somebody that's outside of our district. I find that when we hire at the hospital, that is great that I can find somebody that has a vested interest in being here, because my opportunity to retain that individual goes up substantially. We wanna hire their best, and you're never gonna overlook a poor performer, period. But I don't think that's a bad thing to say they're Camden grad, I think that's a great thing. I think we should encourage that, I think, as far as going forward and retaining folks. I love to have folks that wanna come back to our community, that have a reason and really and a strong desire to be here. I think that's a real key part of when we're hiring staff, certainly essential at hospitals. So I think it's very thing to hire Camden graduates, but I absolutely think you, you hire the best, you hire the best, you do the folks that are taking care of our children, they're taking care of my children.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Now we'll have our closing comments from each candidate. You'll have two minutes to address the crowd, any topic that you'd like, and we'll, while you start with Darren Conner.
First of all, thank you guys for coming out, we appreciate giving up your evening. Everybody's ready to go to Easter break. I didn't forget who I was tonight, so that was, that was a big thing. But thank you, like I said, we, we do need to support, we need to support our teachers and, and our staff and our community. And like I said, I would just really appreciate the opportunity to serve as a board member. Thank you.
Ms. Masterson?
It's been a privilege serving for fifteen years on the Camden School Board, and I have the time and the talents, I have the time to continue in that office if you so choose. I, I think my experience and the contacts I've made across the state are, are really invaluable to this district. Not that all of these gentlemen and, and the ladies on the board now couldn't get to that point and couldn't make those same contacts and couldn't have that same desire, but I do have a desire to continue, and if you would give me your vote on any one second, I would surely appreciate it, and I promise to do you a good job, and that's a, it's a job, it really is. It takes time, it takes reading, it takes effort, and I'm willing to put in that time and effort on your behalf and our students' behalf.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Mulgrew?
The biggest privilege of this has been working with these other people that you see sitting up here tonight, five passionate people asking you for your vote to represent you in this community. I hope tonight what you take away from this is the fact that we're all about the service to the community. It's not about an individual choice, it's not about an individual. Whoever's voted in will be a part of the seven-member team, and they need to act in that fashion. Tonight, I hope I've convinced you that I'm humble, I am, even though I told you that only well would wonder about that, but I just wanna do something for my community that I think pay back for what the community's given to me. Thank you. Thank you for coming out, have a good evening.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah, thanks everybody for being here tonight. I, I think that what we do for our children in this community is, is, it's hard for me to express the amount of time I've spent with kids, and my passion for it, and my interest in our community, serving these children well. We've got a fabulous school district, they've done an amazing job of serving our kids in this community. I can't imagine a better honor than to be a part of that. And whoever may, out of the five sitting here, has that opportunity, I think it's just an amazing thing. I would love to have that opportunity. I think I bring some skills to the table as well, and a lot of Laker pride in what we do. And so I would appreciate the support, and I'm looking forward to however it comes out next Tuesday for everybody. So, thank you.
And Mr. Resontin.
The past three years serving on the board has been a learning experience for me. It was a learning experience when I first started teaching here. I would like to continue that learning experience. If I didn't care about kids, I wouldn't have stayed 29 years teaching sixth grade. My wife would have taught 28 years of third grade, over a half a century of teaching experience from us two. We do care about the kids. We love the kids, and I'd like to continue serving you as a community. As I look around our community, I see some of my former students, and I'm very proud of them, because I know they received a great education from the Camden R3 school. I'd like to keep that tradition going. As a matter of fact, Tom back in the A.D. room, way if Tom went back there was one of my former students. I'm very proud to see our students coming back to our community and serving. I have three, well, I have three kids. My oldest son, he graduated from Camden, he is now working for the Shems Department. My youngest son, he's working for Eddie Whitworth in the assessors office. And my daughter Rob, who is a Camden graduate, also, right now is working out of town. And my little granddaughter will be into the Laker pretty soon. My daughter, on the other hand, she fell in love and got married, and she's gradually moving back to our community. But she received a great education, and they are all being successful. And I would like to continue being part of that success for all our students here at Camden.
Thank you, sir. This concludes the candidate forum. If you have one on quite a point questions for the candidates, please feel free to catch up with them after the event. Thank you for the candidates, for being part of this tonight, and for all of you for attending and for your great questions. Thanks to Camden Public Schools, and please take the time to vote on April 2nd. Your vote counts very much, and have a great evening.